So I'd like to call the March 6th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education to order. In front of you, you will have a copy of the February 6th meetings. If you could all take a look at those minutes. And after you've had it, they've been submitted earlier, so if you have any additions or corrections, let me know. If not, if I could get a motion to approve those minutes. Sangita, second. Hazel. All those in favor? I think everybody but Ms., I think Ms. Ration, you need to abstain.
Well, actually, I think I'm abstaining.
Yeah, you abstain.
I was wondering why they didn't vote for me.
Yep.
Abstain.
Okay, so we have everyone but Penny is approving. And she's abstaining. Okay.
Actually, no, I was here. Sorry, I was here for the, I just came in like.
Yes, right. Oh, right. Yes.
So I don't abstain.
Sorry, she's abstaining. Sorry, I see all these grays in the.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thanks, Penny. If, the next thing is the review and approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Brendan, second. Sangita. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
All right. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have someone who would like to wish to address the board? Mr. Nowacki.
I want to wait till the second hand gets right on top. Michael Nowacki, as you know, the founder of the New Canaan Taxpayers Association, LLC, the founder of the New Canaan League of Registered Voters, LLC, and an announced candidate to be a petitioning candidate for first election with the town of New Canaan in the November election. I'm here to report to ensure that every member of the board is aware of certain actions which I have taken to testify before the Connecticut Legislature on February the 22nd of this year in a non-televise hearing for which there is not a transcript yet available to indicate that I was a whistleblower, blowing the whistle on the subject of the appropriation of money that's been requested by this Board of Education of $3.7 million in the current fiscal year to educate nine special needs students. That is in an internal memorandum that was sent in response to a Board of Ed question. That would suggest that we are paying as taxpayers in excess of $400,000 for each one of those students. I don't believe that's truthful. Understand one thing, that that report in which those expenses were allocated according to the state mandate in the ED1 report results in the overstating of money that then becomes the basis of the cost grants that are given for special needs students. Connecticut General Statute 53A-199, 1196 indicates that it is larceny, defrauding the public community to submit an appropriation request which Dr. Lutzy certified in that ED1 report. And that has been reported to the Legislature and will be reported to the Department of Education tomorrow via express mail letter. These are very serious issues here. All I can say to you is heed my words about Sir Walter Raleigh, who was quoted to say,
Tom, Mr. Nowacki, thank you.
Who was quoted to say, who was quoted to say one thing, Ms. Carlson, "Oh, what a tangled web we weave when first we practice to deceive."
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition. The first item on our reports and recognition is a report by Mr. Willoughby and Woodard and Curran and Mitchell Fuel representatives on propane for the schools. Dr. Lutz?
Wonderful. Yeah, I'll just take a brief moment to welcome representatives from, as you said, Woodard and Curran and Mitchell Fuel. They're here tonight to share with us some very good work that they've been doing over the course, really, of the past two years, you know, looking at our fuel oil tanks for heating at the, at four of the buildings and our, for transportation here at the high school. And as you know, the question of the oil tanks has been an important topic at Board of Finance meetings and Town Council meetings when we're discussing our capital requests. They've been on our long-term capital plan for a number of years. But the fact that they're on that plan, that's not all that we've been doing. When Bob and John took a look and realized that it's time to do some long-term planning, they contacted Woodard and Cohen. They, Curran, they started to sort of do that review for us and to help us to plan sort of what is the, the timing and the best way to replace these tanks. Mitchell Fuel representatives are here, both Matt Mitchell and Mitch Mitchell are here, to share with us information about propane. As you know, we've been looking at that as a heating option as well. Mitchell Fuel is currently the propane's provider for both the town and the Board of Education. And they've been working in this area, I can confidently say, for Mitch and Matt, all of their lives. And so, we welcome all four of you here to the Board of Ed and look forward to hearing what you've been doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Should I speak into the mic or?
Please, if you need to raise it. We have different heights of presentation. There we go. Thank you.
You might have to lower it a little. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Catalano, I'm a senior principal with Woodard and Curran. I wanted to start by saying that there really has been a lot of work completed to date here. It's been a very collaborative effort, actually, in working very closely with Bob and John and Joanne and others. And we appreciate that. We really couldn't be where we are here today without that input that has been received thus far and that knowledge of your existing infrastructure. So it's been, it's been very helpful. There's going to be some decisions you'll need to be making in the upcoming weeks and months here. And we're hopeful that the, the information that we present to you will help to facilitate that, that decision-making. So, just to start off with our agenda and what we're looking to cover here, we'll do some introduction and review the project scope, the overall project scope, just to kind of keep this as comprehensive as possible for you all. Then we'll have a discussion about your existing fuel tank system that you have in place at this time at, at the different schools. We'll address regulatory and closure requirements, obviously very important as that drives the decisions that'll be made moving forward. And then we'll talk about some considerations around the fuel oil tank replacements. We'll then talk about the remaining tasks, what's next in terms, you know, I talked to you about the decision-making that'll have to be made. Well, what are the, what are the tasks moving forward after we've completed this part of the study? And then there'll be a brief discussion, discussion on the propane evaluation. You heard about Mitchell, the Mitchell Company being here and they'll provide some insight on that, so. I already talked about introductions. You know your folks and with me here is Evan Trumpatory, who's our lead project manager for this assignment. And he's going to be walking you through our overall scope and our findings thus far. We also have as part of our team who's now with us this evening, Alvaro, who's been supporting us with site civil engineering issues that are associated with any potential future options that you have available to you. Evan, do you want to start on the project scope?
Yeah, I'm Evan Trumpatory, I'm with Woodard and Curran and associate of Anthony's, lead project manager for this project, done a lot of tank replacement work in the past, so we have a lot of experience coming into this. We wanted to take a really holistic approach to looking at the upgrade or the replacement options for these tanks and really wanted to start at the beginning, try to get a good understanding of what is currently out at the site, how the tank's constructed, the piping materials, where they're located, other site features that are in the proximity of the tanks that may impact or factor into what we do. And then from there, take a stepwise approach. The first thing that we did was actually looked at all of the historical documents, the tank registration, CT, DEEP records, town records, fire marshals, to get a complete picture of what we have at the site. And I have a future slide that kind of summarizes everything that we found and currently what's out at all the school sites. The next thing we wanted to do was do a deep dive into Connecticut closure requirements. So, for those who don't know, closure is, is the administrative and regulatory process that we have to go to to make sure that the state is satisfied when you remove or take tanks out of service. So we wanted to understand, you know, different tanks have different requirements, there's a little bit of subtle differences in the regulations depending on what the, the tanks are storing. So we wanted to do a dive into what the closure requirements were for all of the school sites. The next thing that we did is we looked at site-specific assessments of the tank areas. We wanted to understand if we're going to be recommending or looking at certain options, what the site infrastructure is like, are there subsurface utilities that may prevent certain tanks from coming out or going in, understand what the groundwater table is like so that when we propose to excavate and remove tanks, we have a good understanding going in what we're going to find. We also wanted to look at site planning, topography, site infrastructure, to get a good understanding if we're going to recommend certain tanks, what's going to be there and what's going to be some of the factors in the decision-making process. And then, we're kind of in the middle of this, you know, findings, we've got a lot of information to present and a lot of information that the town's probably going to want to digest and really take their time looking into. So I'm just going to dive right in. This is a quick summary and I know there's a lot of information here, but this in a nutshell is everything that, that's out at all of the school sites with respect to your existing tanks. You know, east, south, west, and sacks all have what we call number two fuel oil or heating oil. They're regulated under Connecticut Underground Storage Tank Regulations 22A, 449D1. The diesel tank at the high school, it's a little bit different because Connecticut regulates diesel a little bit separately than fuel oil. They're pretty much the same product. Difference is that they regulate a little bit differently because diesel can be dispensed. And so rather than just take the oil and burn it, there's some different things that they want you to look at if you're going to be storing diesel. Can we have a quick, probably looks familiar, this is New Canaan, just showing you a map of where all the existing tank sites are, east, south, west, sacks and the high school. High school, 20,000 gallon tank is right in the bus driveway, dispenser's right here, it's underground. Sacks Middle School, the 15,000 gallon underground fuel oil tank is near the, actually near John and Bob's office, right near the air chiller. East Elementary School, in the bus driveway, we have an 8,000 gallon underground storage tank. We have an 8, 10,000 gallon, I'm sorry, at, at South Elementary School in the back driveway area. And then West Elementary School, it's in the entrance area, right outside the boiler room, there's an 8,000 gallon underground tank. This is going back to my comment before, so Connecticut regulates heating oil and diesel a little bit differently, they're, they're the same subparts to the same regulation, or different subparts to the same regulation. Basically, the only subtle difference with respect to, to New Canaan is that heating oil is regulated under the first part and diesel is regulated under all of the other parts, parts 101 through 113. And the trigger to, to remove or to replace tanks is based on life expectancy and/or manufacturer Tanks at sacks, south, east, and west were installed in 89, sorry, with a recommended tank, life expectancy of 30 years. The high school was installed in 93, same thing, a recommended life expectancy of 30 years. And all of the tanks are going to require proper abandonment, closure and/or removal depending on certain factors at the end of their life expectancy. The closure requirements, again, back to my point that they're, the regulations are the same, it's basically just differentiating but the fact that the tank at the high school has diesel, but the closure requirements are the most part the same. They want, the, the state wants you to notify them of your intent to remove the tank, they want to understand when it's coming out, what is coming out. They want to make sure that the tank is cleaned properly, that any residual fuel is removed. And then this, this last one is, owners and operators shall measure for the presence of release. They want to make sure that when you remove the tank that you're not leaving any issues in the ground. Again, the, the diesel tank, the, pretty much the same requirements, it's worded a little bit differently. So our approach, so understanding, you know, the, the background, what tanks are located where, what they're made of, and when they have to be closed, we wanted to take, again, a holistic approach to understanding, you know, what the, the site conditions are like. So we wanted to conduct a few different types of site investigations. We wanted to determine some options for tank sizing, meaning can we size down a little bit in areas where maybe we're currently storing more than we need? And then we wanted to present a couple of different options at each school, basically above ground or below ground. And there's benefits and drawbacks to both. You know, above ground, there's the aesthetics issue, you have a big tank sitting outside the ground. Underground tanks, there's a lot more regulations, monitoring, reporting requirements to the state that you'd have to comply with if the tank went back in the ground. And then, the options really account for a couple of different things, site layout, presence of utilities, site infrastructure, aesthetics, and other factors. So we talked about, so the site-specific utility mapping, we looked at ground penetrating radar to scan the area of where the current tanks are to make sure we understood where all the utilities were, had a good sense of where the tank was. We did pipe tracing and even visual inspections in certain areas. To the extent that we could, we also looked at groundwater. Not all of the, the sites had existing wells, but where we could, we actually gauged depth to water. So we understand at a given tank location exactly how deep the water table is there. And ultimately, when we excavate or look to remove the tank, understand what we're going to find when we open the ground up in terms of depth to water. And then we had a site visit by one of our professional engineers come out, take a look, understand what some of the engineering factors would be in laying out these tank locations. So, a lot of work went around trying to figure out how much fuel oil would, would be needed if we're going to replace these tanks. And there's a lot of backend calculations here, but what we basically did is we looked at the three-year average for heat season. Heating season, depending on the state, is roughly November 1st through March 31st. It's kind of your worst-case scenario in terms of having to heat the building. So we looked at three years of heating for the middle school and the three elementary schools. We didn't factor it into the high school because the high school tank is pretty much only for fleet fueling. So it didn't really factor into the heat season, it was kind of a law, a year-long calculation, a little bit different. And but basically what we, we determined is that, for the most part, there's a little bit of a capacity to size down some of the, the tanks at the elementary schools. Tank at the, the middle school is pretty much sized spot-on and we're going to, for now, propose to keep the diesel tank the same given its role in emergency fleet fueling and other things like that. Okay, so based on all of this, we proposed a couple of different options at each school. These options are based on engineering's, you know, infrastructure, presence of utilities, aesthetics. And so at the high school, we have basically two options. It would be replacing the 20,000 gallon tank with another 20,000 gallon tank. The, the old tank, I don't know if you can see, it's this solid orange box right here. The new tank, underground option, would be proposed to go right back in the hole. So basically, you would excavate, drop a new tank right back in, make the connections, and, and, and that's it, no changes. The other option would be an above-ground tank somewhere adjacent to the current tank. We still have to coordinate with the fire marshal on setbacks and some other site-specific requirements, but these would be the two options at the high school. The middle school, the, the two options we have, it's kind of tough to see, maybe see a little bit better on your printout, but there's an air handler, a big chiller, sitting right next to the old tank and it's, it may require the need to abandon the existing tank in place, which the state allows if you can make a case. So, the options we had for sacks were actually to abandon the tank in place and then either go with a larger 15,000 gallon tank out in the parking lot, underground, or two split-compartment 8,000 gallon tanks, pretty much on top of where the existing tanks are. At East Elementary School, we proposed, same as the high school, putting one, you know, first option is the tank going right back into the existing tank's excavation. And then the other option for above-ground would be a above-ground tank cut into this hill right here. South, pretty much the same, we proposed to either replace the existing tank in the previous tank's grave, or there's a, a little area next to the school right here where we proposed putting an above-ground tank somewhere right in that area. And West Elementary, option A would be the existing tank right back in another underground storage tank, or putting an above-ground tank in the concrete pad area right there, right outside where the existing tank is. We have a couple of things that we still have to figure out. First, I mentioned before, is coordinating with the fire marshal to make sure that setbacks allow us to put the above-ground tanks where they need to go. Setbacks are basically what the requirements are, how far the tank would have to go off the building. It's based on fire code and some other regulatory guidance documents that are out there. We also need to finalize the engineering and permitting evaluation, really understand what type of design components would need to be included in the tank, excavation safety, any dewatering, things like that. Couple of, we want to finalize whether or not we need any pre-tank removal investigations, determining depth to water at some of the sites that we don't have that information, things of that nature. Provide final cost estimates for the replacement options and then issue reports with our findings and recommendations. The other thing that, that's kind of a work in progress is supporting New Canaan with contractor procurement and installation and startup. So once, you know, an option or a proposed approach is selected, actually move forward with the implementation, bidding, contractor procurement, things of that nature. And then the last is to continue coordinating with New Canaan on the proposed propane conversion. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mitchell and talk a little bit about what
Matt Mitchell, Norbert Mitchell Company. We've been the New Canaan's propane supplier since 2011. Also, our, my family's been in the propane and fuel oil business for over 60 years, oil for over 70 now. So that, that was the context with which we, we took a look at this, we were asked to come in and take a look at the possibility of a propane conversion. And look at potential tank locations, tank sizes, and, and basic layout of a project of that scope. A couple notes on, on propane in general and, and the configuration that's there. The schools already have dual fuel burners, which means they can burn both fuel oil and propane, can go back and forth. Of course, the propane's not in place, but fuel oil already is. This takes part of the mechanical aspect of adding propane to the systems. That part of it's done already and it's one of the more complicated parts. Now, the systems would just need to be converted. And of course, tanks and lines, the big part. The benefits of adding propane, there's a potential for boiler gains and boiler efficiency by adding propane, even in the existing boilers that are there. But more of the gains down the road would be to add, have the ability to add more efficient equipment. With the ability to burn propane, you have, you're open to more options when it comes to equipment, condensing equipment and equipment that can use less product. And we've, we've felt and seen in, in our work that the real gains and, and cost savings come from more efficient equipment, not necessarily fuel changes or fuel switching, but the options to incorporate better equipment into, into settings. And then you burn less fuel, so you save more money that way. What's been talked about is having the, having the ability to have fuel oil then be a, a backup source of, of heating and also, they said, leaving the diesel fuel in place to be able to use that for fleet fueling. But, but fuel oil remains an extremely reliable and very BTU-rich heating fuel. So it's, there's a, there's certainly a very good argument for leaving that in place long-term, both for potential cost savings in the case of price differences, but also for the reliability of that product and having it there if you should ever need it. So I, I know the schools have been evaluating the potential install of the propane tanks in fiscal year 2018, having those in place and then, and then over time incorporating the, the fuel oil updates into the mix after that, after the propane installation's been The next slide here is, it's a simple breakdown of the heating fuel costs of the five schools for the, for the last three years and then a three-year average. This was information we had gotten directly from, from the public schools, just simply gallons, what they paid in the totals, and developed an average from that. And then the, the, the projection for the current year is just an average of the gallons from the, the three previous at the current contracted rate, which we were, we are not the supplier for the town for fuel oil, but we were told the rate was 199 by the New Canaan Public Schools. And that comes up with the current New Canaan fuel oil price along with projected costs The next slide, we took the, we took the, the average gallon number from the prior slide for the last three years and we did some, we did a few assumptions and offered some scenarios on what possible propane consumption would be, given the same equipment that's in place now. And, and we use a range, whenever you're doing a propane conversion, it's, it's very environment-specific and equipment-specific, so you never know exactly how much propane you're going to end up using as compared to what you used for oil. It's not an exact science. It depends, it depends a lot on usage habits and the equipment in place and how efficient that equipment is on oil versus propane. What we typically see is a range probably in the 40 to 45 percent more propane used than what you used for oil. And the, the reason for that is the, the, like I said, originally, fuel oil is a very BTU-intensive product. So, but you do gain efficiency going over to the propane. The projects where we've seen the greatest savings are when new equipment and system reconfigurations are also done to kind of, to gain some of that efficiency from use of some more efficient equipment that's only available on the gas side, which is something that can be incorporated later on. So just going off the sheet here, we use the projected propane price and that's for, that's projected for this coming winter, 17, 18, next winter of 119. That's, that changes on a daily basis, but that's a projection based on where the market's been about. And that's the comparison number we used versus the 199 that the town is currently at, to come up with some savings projections. The, the payback on the end was derived from the, the, New Canaan Public Schools had a, had a rough budget number of 820,000 for the propane installation of the propane tanks and lines and conversions of the units. And, which, which is in, in the ballpark of what we feel it would be as well. And we use that to develop some, some simple payback based on current configuration. Like I said, there's additional savings that you can get from incorporating more efficient equipment in certain spots in certain schools that could, that could make a difference, that will make a difference long-term if they're, if they're follow-through on. But we, we certainly prefer to take a more conservative approach when we're looking at how many gallons will be used on the propane end versus the oil end because we know the BTU equivalency. Oil is a more potent fuel and produces more heat per gallon. But you get efficiency gains and you do get a lower maintenance cost when it comes to the gas, there's less regular maintenance required on that end. And that's, that's basically what we had to go over. We'll tell you that the, on a, on a cost basis, propane has generally been close to, I'd say, half to 75 percent of the cost of oil, that's where it's been for quite some time now. It moves with the fuel oil market, so it's similar on a cost basis. While it's a less expensive, it tends to move with, with the refined products, not in lockstep, but fairly close to each other. So I'll turn it over for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Brendan?
Yeah, I just had a question on the timing of tank removal. Is it an absolute legal requirement that the tanks be removed at their end of their useful life, which is, I think, August 2019, right?
Yeah, so, so the trigger is the life expectancy. We actually have the, the original manufacturer's warranty sheets on record, so we know it's a 30-year.
Oh, thank you. We, we know it's a 30-year manufacturer's warranty. The regulation, Connecticut is, is not great about ironclad regulations, a lot of it's up to interpretation. But for the, the most part, they, the state wants to see the tank starting, at least moving towards removal. And within a few years, they need to be out of the ground and no longer being operated. So, there's a little bit of wiggle room depending on which regulator you're asking, but for the most part, it's, once that 30-year life expectancy is, is triggered.
the most part, it's, once that 30-year life expectancy is triggered, the tanks, you at least need to start thinking about getting the tanks out of the ground. There's a little bit of a grace period.
Okay. One other question, which is, in light of the location, I imagine the work needs to be done during the summer?
Yeah, we had initially approached this, this project that the construction, for the most part, would happen, you know, end of the school year to right before the beginning of the school year, especially in certain areas like East, where it's right in the bus drop-off, or South, same thing. So, yeah, for the most part, our assumption is that construction would take place during the off months.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Hazel? I just wanted to follow up on that question. Are you saying if you started it in the spring, excuse me, when school gets out, I'll say, June, would you be finished before school opened again in the fall or does it?
Yeah, I mean, that's the plan. So, at the end of our study, when we wrap everything up, what will also be included in the report is a sequence, right? So, some recommendations on how Woodard and Curran would envision sequencing the removal of the tanks. Not every tank needs to be removed right away. We have a few years until that trigger starts. And then a little bit of flexibility in terms of which schools would need to be done first. But, yeah, the idea is that everything would be done during the summer, I'll say.
Okay. Thank you. Penny?
Could you talk about safety considerations with propane and also what our peer schools are doing, our districts?
I don't know if you guys want to weigh in on that. Yeah. Towards, Norbert Mitchell, from Mitchell Fuel. Towards the safety aspect of it, all the propane installations would be underground. So, you'd eliminate the exposure to the outside, which would make the requirements for fire safety analysis very small. You'd also have the fill areas protected by crash-proof battlers and also surrounded by fence, by secure fencing. Any of the smaller schools where they would have multiple small tank installations or just, you know, like you'd see in a standard residential application, there would be locks on the tops of those tanks, fire-merchil-proof locks on those tanks to stop anybody from tampering from that. From a safety aspect, it's, it's not that there's going to be a failure that's going to create a safety issue, it's going to be tampering of some kind because you're on public property, you're on a school. So, our job, being in this industry, is to make sure that nobody can tamper with what's there.
So, I'm sorry, wait, it would be even at our elementary schools, which are our smaller schools? Those would be underground tanks?
All underground, yes. Yeah, all the propane tanks would be underground, yes.
And what, which of our peer schools in Connecticut have gone to propane, if any?
Well, if we look at different states, not in Connecticut, but different states, Vermont, Massachusetts, Maine, many of them have large above-ground tanks because of their rural locations. Obviously, that's not going to apply down here. That's not going to, you don't have the property to put the large above-ground installations as well as you don't want that exposure of a large above-ground installation.
Right. So, I guess, I guess, so in Connecticut, are there any schools that have done?
Municipal, Brookfield Library, there's libraries and municipal buildings that have in the towns, yes.
We've just completed a few private.
You take the, could you take the?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I've just completed a few, just hang on. I've just, we've done this exact conversion at some private facilities as well. And if anybody, like I said, we've done this quite a few times and we have free range if anyone wants to come look at what we've done, look at the tanks, look at the equipment, see how it ends up. From a safety perspective, tanks in the ground for the fuel, for the tank, the ground's warmer, tanks are in better shape. We have cathodic protection for those tanks, which pull the currents in the ground away from the tanks. So, what we've seen, we've had propane tanks in the ground for 40 years that come out looking brand-new, you know, a little different than tanks with fuel in it. Steel tanks, old steel tanks, they come out, they look like rusted buckets, so. And when the tanks are in the ground, like you said, really, it's a tamper issue, which knock on wood, we, I can't even think of an issue at anywhere, school, we do hospitals and, like you said, all municipality buildings and stuff, it's knock on wood, no issues.
Sangita?
So, in light of that, because I know the beginning of the presentation, you're telling us locations for underground versus on top, right? So, really, we're looking at really just locations that are underground, we're not going to really focus on the ones on top. Is that my understanding or?
Well, for fuel oil, it's a little bit different because we're dealing with certain, the volumes of the tanks that we're proposing are a little bit different than what we're proposing for propane. As an example, you know, at East Elementary, initially, we were looking at maybe a 5,000-gallon above-ground tank. It's a little bit smaller than what we were proposing for propane. I think it was 6,000 gallons total. But the flammability, there's some other factors that allow you to store petroleum above-ground. And actually, in a lot of instances, it's more preferred because there's less environmental regulations, less maintenance and long-term monitoring requirements. We've talked about cathodic protection. That's a perfect example. Cathodic protection makes sure that the tank doesn't corrode. If the tank is above-ground and not in contact with the ground surface, it can't corrode. You don't need to establish cathodic protection. You don't have to go through the routine testing requirements. So, there's some benefits for fuel oil to go above-ground versus maybe not so much propane.
That's what I was going to say. That's one of the, been the motivation for a lot of people to get oil out of the ground because oil is a fluid, it can leak, there's contamination, there's all those things. Propane is a vapor, leaks, it disintegrates in the air. So, we've seen that with schools and towns saying, we just don't want to monitor these tanks anymore, we don't want to take a risk of an oil leak, so they put them above-ground, double-wall, fire-protected tanks. And if there's a leak, there's a drip, you see it and you take care of it instead of just leaking for years and years and years. So, it's an environmental motivation for people to get oil out of the ground. We've seen over the last 20 years, we've done a lot of removals. That's part of some of the conversions we've seen, so.
The balance, especially for somewhere, you know, for a school district, is the aesthetics, right? So, the convenience of having the fuel oil above-ground so that the monitoring and environmental liabilities are minimized, but balancing that with having a, you know, 20-foot-wide by 10-foot-tall tank sitting in the driveway of the school. So, it's that challenge in balancing, you know, the regulations versus what's going to work best for the district.
Just one other thing I just wanted to mention is our role, we see it as, and I said this in the beginning of the presentation, is to help support you all with your decision-making. And so, our study and our report, once it's finalized, will have more details related to cost benefits, right? So, what are the pluses and minuses of going with the different options? And that information will be helpful to you all and so you should expect that as part of the report.
And then just a follow-up on that. For the propane tanks going underground, what's a timeframe for that, like in terms of that whole project?
As far as how long the installation takes or how long they last or?
How long the installation takes? Like, could you get that done through a summer or?
That's something, yeah. A lot of the work that would have to be done is in the mechanical rooms, actually installing the piping, so that could be done before the school season actually ends because it wouldn't interrupt the school day. Any of the outside, in-the-ground work would be kind of disruptive, so it'd all have to be done in the summer. So, yeah, the plan would be to try to accomplish that in the summer.
Any other? Maria?
You said some last up to 40 years. What is this typical life expectancy?
There is no life expectancy on a propane tank. You're monitoring the tank, it's cathetically protected. So, it's much different than what it is a fuel tank. It doesn't inhibit moisture in the tank, so you don't have this situation. Most oil tanks that fail, fail from the inside out due to electrolysis that happens from small amounts of water in the bottom of the tank that actually burn pinholes called holidays in the bottom of the tank. Propane, you don't have any moisture in the fuel. So, you don't have that problem from the inside or the outside of the tank. And when you cathetically protect a tank, you're basically lighting the tank up like a light bulb and stopping any ground energy from getting into the tank, creating that electrolysis that could possibly go into the tank. So, we have taken tanks out, I mean, myself personally, over 60-years-old that look like, and that were not cathetically protected because the ground soils were good. And they were actually moved and put in different locations on a property because they were removed for putting a swimming pool in or putting an addition out of a building. So, there really is no defined lifespan. The manufacturers don't define a lifespan on the tank either, so, when it comes to propane tanks.
The converse is true as well. If you, if you put a tank in a poor location that has a lot of groundwater and it's not cathetically protected properly, you could have some of the same issues, except with propane, you don't have the inside-out issue that you have with oil, with water on the inside of the tank because water doesn't exist in that environment.
Thank you. Hazel? There's been some discussion in our town for the last couple of years about natural gas. In my understanding of what's happening, it's not happening fast enough for us to do this, but what would be the difference between, what would be the recommendation if natural gas were available? Are the pluses or minuses of it?
If it were available now or down the road?
Good question. Maybe you better answer it because I don't, I'm not sure which answer.
Well, natural gas now, and the rates are different for the different class users, but if you're looking at it from a cost standpoint, natural gas is probably, per BTU, a hair more expensive now than propane would be based on where the propane market is right now. The cost on bringing a line to a building, a natural gas line, we've heard everything. So, you can't, you can't really put a number on it. It all depends on what the, what the scenario is under which they want to bring that line to the building and what else is going to be involved around it that's going to draw from it. That's a formula that none of us really knows. We can tell you what a propane tank costs and how much it costs to put the tank in and put a line to the building. That is pretty straightforward, but there's a whole calculus that goes into natural gas and what they need in order to get it to someplace. So, we leave that to the utilities. But I would, I would say it all depends on what the given project scope is at that point of the natural gas utility and what they feel it needs in order to get it there. You do have the ability with propane gas to choose your supplier. It's always, and you have it with oil. You don't have that with natural gas, so.
Any other questions? Penny?
If you have it available, I'd love to see a list of the schools or institutions where you've done this conversion or if you've built a new school and they went with propane rather than oil, just to get a sense for how widespread the, you know, the practice is.
Okay. We can get you a reference list for that.
Maybe a lot of these schools can do natural gas because they have natural gas in the community, you know, which is obviously not available to us now.
That's what we see most of the time. And I know a lot of the larger municipalities, they have natural gas access, so they have dual-fuel oil and natural gas and they use both, both systems.
Brendan?
It looks like all the tanks were put in at the same time originally in 89. Is there a volume benefit to having everything done at the same time from a pricing perspective?
We could, probably not. You're not, I know from us, if we have to go buy a tank to sell, to resell, we're not going to be able to buy it cheaper for buying it with five other tanks. So, there's not likely to be any kind of package deal on that. I know from our perspective, I don't know what they've seen in the marketplace.
But also, you know, the sites are segregated, so it's not like it's one mobilization, you bring all the equipment to one site and you pull and install five different tanks. It's almost like five separate projects that have to be coordinated simultaneously if you're doing it like that, so.
It's also a logistical issue too. You heard before about scheduling and with the school programs that are going on and also, it is somewhat of a logistical issue too, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other question? Penny?
So, I guess if this was a way that the district decided that they wanted to go, if you were thinking you were going to do the work in the summer, what is the lead time required? So, when would the school board and the town need to make a decision?
If you're referring to propane, the lead time on a tank is probably about 10 weeks, 12, about 10 weeks.
Certain-sized tanks you're giving, they're all made over 2,000 gallons, so we've seen them about 10 weeks, worst case, six, eight weeks. So, everything you would have to do, you wanted to do it this summer, would have to move relatively quickly so the order for the tanks, like they mentioned, we can get into the mechanical, do all that work, most of the session, over there. And then for the outside work, school ends, you dig the whole transcrains, come in, put it in, that would be relatively minimal invasive to get it done, maybe five days there. But we don't want to be sitting around waiting for a tank, so. That's the only thing I've seen that could be a hiccup if you guys said this summer we got to do it.
Penny?
So, if you wanted to schedule, rather than doing it all in one summer, just schedule it over a couple of summers or two or three summers, for the tanks that, you know, are supposed to be out in 2000, what was it, 18?
19.
19. Is there testing that you can do, where that would be appropriate to do to determine, you know, that they're still, still in reasonable shape for another year and not leaking? Do you just test the soil outside the tank? Is there any way to see how much corrosion there might be inside the tank?
They're actually doing that now. The tanks are monitored routinely, another company does it. And I know at East, they do cathodic protection, monitoring of the soils to make sure that there's no corrosion potential. State of Connecticut is pretty firm, but with respect to the heating oil tanks, so the three elementary schools and the middle school, they did release some additional guidance on tanks that are regulated under that second part, the diesel tank, allowing under certain conditions to extend the life expectancy by a few years, provided you can demonstrate that there's certain components of the tank that were installed or that were on the tank when it was installed. For example, strike plates, which are at the portions of the tank where you would normally stick the tank to get a measurement, those are points of failure, right? Because from repeated year after year, they get, you know, a stick gets dropped into the tank and hits the bottom. So, if you can demonstrate the tanks have striker plates and that it passes a tightness test and a couple of other things, you can petition the state to allow an extension of the life expectancy, but it's not guaranteed and it's only on certain types of tanks.
Other questions?
I have a couple. I just wanted to understand a little bit better. You mentioned that part of the efficiency of propane is related to the equipment and the newness and the replacing of equipment. Do you see a degradation of the efficiency over time and how quickly do you see a degradation of the efficiency in, you know, because obviously, equipment's going to get older.
Yeah. Generally, with mechanical equipment, it's designed, as long as it's cleaned and maintained, it's going to have the same efficiency when you put it in the service as when you take it out of service. It would be like a furnace in your house. If you never cleaned it, but once every three or four years, you're not going to get very good efficiency at the end of its life. It's the same type of thing. There's really no degradation in the efficiency of that equipment.
Okay. And then, could you give us a little bit of an education on sort of the pricing of propane and what it's linked to? It's a, it's a, is it linked to, explain, is it, is it, it's an oil, something that they do with oil to? Give us a little education on propane and how we track, because I can't go like to a, to a financial website and get, you know, propane like you can natural gas and oil.
No, it's not, it's not a simple commodity index and there it is. And you could, you could see it at any time. There are some indexes that people use based on pipelines that come up to near our area and that seems to be a, something that people use universally, but propane is a byproduct of natural gas and fuel oil production, both those two. Yeah, so it's produced, certain part of it is produced in both processes. So, it's, it is priced mostly based on supply and demand still, unlike a lot of the rest of the commodities that have kind of left that, that market altogether. So, it's, it's, it has, over the last probably 10 years, seen a lot more stability or it's starting to move towards more stability because there's more supply points for it. Whereas years, years ago, we had to go quite far to get propane. It's much better now. There's, there's much more, I wouldn't say local, but more regional supply points that you can rely on and more of them, so there's more options for it. But propane tends to move with, with the, with the, with the oil market. That's where it's been tracking. It occasionally will break off and move a bit with natural gas as well. It's a bit unpredictable like that. But it normally, if you, if you look at a curve over, over two or three years, you can see it moving with the, with the heating oil market with fairly good relation. The things that make it, that make it spike and go out of rhythm with that are the supply and demand parts. So, a few winters ago, a few years ago, we had a, we had a very wet crop season and then we had a, and then we had a very cold winter. So, the grain drying that they use propane for was, was a run on propane going into the heating season. And then, once we got in the heating season, it was very cold, so the draw continued there. That caused propane to move a bit more expensive in its relation to fuel. Not, still not at the price, but that threw that percentage off, that 50% to 75% I was talking about, then you were more in the 75% to 80% range because of the dynamics of supply and demand for propane. So, it still has a kind of a traditional, I guess it's more of a grassroots, local commodities market concept in that when more people need propane, the price of it goes up. It's not, it's not necessarily based on speculation all the time.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. And then, my final question is really for you guys. So, we're fortunate, we have Bob and John here and we get updates occasionally on, you know, the soundness of those tanks and I know that they're testing them and so far, so good. What, we have, you know, a budget, a capital plan that has money so far, so good. What, we have, you know, a budget, a capital plan that has money in the budget, you know, three years out to take those tanks out. And I don't know if that figure is, I'm assuming that figure's been shared with you as far as, you know, the two hundred thousand dollars to take those tanks out in three years. You know, do you feel like that's still a good estimate? Are we, you know, and what is the risk of when you're taking it out, we have a leak? And, and sort of what's, what's our risk there? Because, you know.
Yeah.
They're oil tanks.
So, so the first part, I just want to make sure I understand. Are we talking just removal only? So.
I don't know.
So setting aside, setting aside propane, you know, I know that we're still trying to figure out if we're going to go propane or fuel oil. But I think, to your first part, yeah, the, the cost for removal.
Yeah, removal.
Pretty consistent. I mean, it's a pretty consistent number, somewhere in the thirty, you know, thirty to forty thousand per site. Depending, I think it's pretty consistent. Depending on obviously some infrastructure, depending on, you know, presence of utilities, if some certain utilities need to be protected. A good example is at East School. So some of the piping that was out there, they've since put a generator on top of. So figuring out how to remove that piping, and we could petition to abandon it in place, but kind of understanding maybe some of the site-specific factors will impact the cost a little bit. But I think on the whole, the removal end is, is fairly consistent with, with your numbers. The part B of that question, with respect to what we're going to find when you open up the ground, we had a, we had a note in there about pre-investigations, you know, pre-removal investigations. And that's at the point that we would look to better understand what the potentials are before we open up a hole in the ground. Because once it's open, it's open. But to get an understanding of what subsurface conditions are like ahead of time will be very valuable. And to the extent that we, we can use existing information such as wells that are, that are near the tanks, or any other historic information, we can use that to get a better understanding of what we might find. But there's, there's always the potential. But to the extent that we can minimize it before doing anything, before we actually break ground and start pulling the tanks, that's, that's the current plan.
And I would add that we'll probably be in the next couple of weeks in a better position with respect to advising on the cost. Once we go through further evaluation of, of our, of our findings and our discussions with, with your team here, we'll, we're going to go back and refine those numbers. And again, we'll be in a better position at that point to, to be able to specifically say, yeah, well, two hundred's enough or it's not, and where we are. So.
All right. Thank you very much. I think Brian has.
Yeah, just, just one or two quick things. The, and this is incredibly informative. And if I could, I'd probably keep you here all night asking questions about it. So I won't do that to you. But just so we're all on the same page, the, you know, the high school has two tanks underground, correct? The, you know, the one is the twenty thousand for the buses and for emergency fueling. And that's the one that you've looked at, and that's the one that's in this report.
Yeah.
The other's not because it's date, it's still, what, eight or nine years out?
Yeah. It's several years out. So, so the, the tank at the high school was actually a few years after the other schools, the diesel tank. But the fuel oil tank is much newer. I think somewhere around circa two thousand, two thousand, two thousand, two thousand eight. So.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, so we didn't even include the fuel oil tank as part of our scope in terms of tank replacements, because there's so many years left on its life expectancy.
Right. Because that one, it's newer, it's in good shape, and we can move. So with that, we're, we're beginning this year for the process of switching our buses to go from diesel to propane. So in, in three years, two years actually, if we do the math, the, that twenty thousand diesel fuel tank, twenty thousand gallon tank, we wouldn't need that for our buses anymore. However, the, there's also an agreement with the town for the emergency management, that that is a just in case, so that they would have it to fuel their vehicles. If, in conversation with the town, if they agree that that could be relocated somewhere else and maybe resized and put above ground or what have you, is there, would there be any other need for us to have diesel here on site at the high school if the fleet has flipped over to propane?
No. I mean, the boilers run off of, of heating oil. I mean, they're, they're very, very similar products. But, but no. I mean, our understanding is that that tank at the high school is primarily for fleet fueling, emergency fueling, dispensing, and not to heat the building or for any other future uses.
Sure. Okay. To Mitchell guys, do you guys know of any, any other school districts that have done something similar with their bus fleet as far as the propane goes? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes. We know there's, there's a few actually, even on this side of the, the state that have gone over to propane with their buses. Some have done it gradually, some kind of done it all at once. Most recently, New Milford has, has made the move with part of their fleet over to propane. They're in their first year of it. We, we hear it's going well.
It's twenty-four buses a year over three years phased in.
Yeah. So they're, so they're on that, they're on that, that phase in, that phase in process. The, the only complication with the phase in is that you have to have both products and run them both for, for, for a while as you're doing the phase in. But if you're able to do that, it does give you the ability to do it a little more gradually. The, the options for the short term in your phase in years would be to have a smaller, you know, before you, before you put in, you know, if you're, if you're space constraint, which you may be at the high school, based on where you might want to put that propane tank to fuel the buses, then you've, you've got to have a temporary solution until you're ready to put that, put that tank and pump system in the place of where the diesel is, which you won't need anymore. So that's a consideration. But there's plenty of options on that. There's a, you could put a smaller pump station, self-contained pump station there with a smaller tank and pump that can be moved afterwards. Or you could mobile fleet it with a, with a, with the actual propane fueling truck come every couple of days and fill the trucks. That's another option. Not the supplier's favorite option, but it's an option.
Okay.
Penny?
You said there were several schools that had done it, but you just mentioned New Milford. What other schools have done it?
Torrington.
Shelton.
Shelton, part of Waterbury. I'm trying to think of what others. I know, I know there's, there's lots talking about it, but those are the ones that come to mind that I, we know have done it so far.
And what would you, are there advantages that you know of?
Well, we're, we're hearing a lot about the, about the, the lower maintenance costs on the buses. Longer regular maintenance cycles, so they can stretch out the, stretch out the, the PMs, the preventative maintenance, to more miles. So if they traditionally did them at four thousand miles, they do them at six. I don't know what the interval is, but it's just, they've been able to stretch it out more because the fuel is, the, the fuel burns with less, with less particles afterwards. So there's less to clean. So they get, they get good, good, good runtime in the engines. And, and repairs, from what we've heard, have been, have been less than what they typically see on newer diesel vehicles.
Sangita?
I just have a question again about the cost, going back to, to the honest question. And understand that, you know, it's the demand and supply that kind of changes the cost of the propane. But just over the last ten years, what's the range been for the cost? I mean, what's the least it's been and what's the most it's been?
Well, I think, probably want to look at, as a percentage of heating oil, it's been anywhere from thirty percent to say eighty percent of the cost. So just pure, you know, a gallon of heating oil is a dollar ninety-nine, a gallon of propane is a dollar twenty, or a dollar, you know, a dollar nineteen, a dollar ten. That's been about the range of it. So you'd probably say if you wanted just pure dollars, anywhere from a dollar up to almost as much as two dollars, the propane would, would go for. And, and more than that in some, in some supply spike scenarios. But most of those spike scenarios that we've seen have happened mid-winter, when a typical school system is locked into a fixed-price plan, so it doesn't really impact them, you know, because you got it, that's why you got a fixed-price plan. So that will, of course, impact how you bid propane and, and how you do that end of it. But because it is more of a supply and demand situation in the off-season, you tend to see pretty, a pretty smooth price curve for propane.
Thank you.
Penny?
Can you just talk a little bit about emissions with propane for the bus fleet versus diesel?
Yeah. You don't, there's no heavy particulate emissions from the propane. You're burning a, a fuel that's already atomized. So you're not taking and trying to atomize a fuel and burn it. So you don't have any heavy particulates. The carbon monoxide coming out is less than what it is with the diesel bus. There's a lot of substances that are in diesel, that are in liquid fuels that are not in a gaseous fuel. So they're very clean. One of the other things, maybe to get off topic a little bit, is the buses are quiet. You don't hear this roaring bus. The bus drivers tend to like them more once they get used to them because they can hear what's going on around them. So from a safety aspect, they can hear what's going on down the road. They can hear what, you know, they're not pulling away from the bus stop, but there's a big cloud of smoke coming out whenever they take off with the kids.
Okay. Thank you.
So there are regulations around idling time for buses? I think there's a three-minute maximum for idling time and things.
On the diesels. I don't believe, I don't believe that applies, but I'd have to check on that. But I don't believe that applies to the gas buses.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Okay. Thank you. This was really, really helpful. So I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, guys. And I know we'll continue our conversations and keep working together as we keep planning this out. But we're very lucky to have all of your wisdom and experience to help us making these decisions. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget update with Dr. Lettsay.
Okay. Thank you. Well, as, as I'm sure you're aware, I know you're all aware, our budget season continues in full swing. We have met with the Board of Finance once, two weeks ago, and we'll be meeting with them again tomorrow evening. I wanted to just take a moment to just share a little bit where we are in the process and just have a reframe on our budget just a little bit. As you know, the budget, the Board of Education's budget reflects months of really hard and careful work on the part of the, certainly the administrators, the teachers, the cabinet, all of us. I believed when I put it forward, and I still believe today, that it is a very thoughtful, well-crafted budget that truly balances the, the needs in the educational, in the schools and the educational community, with the, the desires of the town and those on town boards for careful stewardship and, and balanced approach. You know, we look very, very carefully when we build our budget at the, the needs, and we carve away the wants and really put, bring forward a budget that we believe is what's required to maintain the level of educational experience that our communities come to expect for all of our students in our schools. So at a two point seven six percent, we feel, I feel very confident that it is a very responsible budget that balanced all of these competing demands, and that will help us to continue to maintain that, the very highest quality of experience for all of our students. The, at the Board of Finance meeting last week, I know there was some conversation about sort of areas to, for further discussion and consideration. They looked at both capital and at our operating budget. On the capital side of the budget, some of the feedback I've received has been that they are looking at delaying the propane installation, given the ongoing conversations about natural gas. Despite that delay, we, I also, I still felt, we felt it was important for the team to come before you tonight to let you know all the good work that's happened, and to show you that were the natural gas not to come through, we are continuing and will be prepared to move in this direction with, with propane if the board feels it's the right thing to do. They also discussed the reduction of the two hundred thousand dollar item at Saks on the playground. As you know, that was a replacement of equipment, an updating of what's there for our students to make sure it's certainly safe and age-appropriate for our fifth through eighth graders. There's also been some discussion about the energy conservation project that we brought forward. As you recall, probably back with our, our conversation with the Board of Finance two weeks ago, we shared with them that the Eversource does offer a five hundred thousand dollar interest-free loan. It's a hundred thousand dollars per meter. So they would offer that five hundred thousand dollar interest-free loan towards this energy conservation project. So after some of that discussion, we're looking at reshaping the project so that in year one, we would use that interest-free loan, where then the money's repaid back by the savings that you accrue by doing the conservation plan for year one. And then we'd commit to fully funding the rest of it in year two. So we're developing that proposal as well that we'll be sharing with them. But significant conversation about the capital, certainly in some of the changes there. Equally significant were the conversations about the operating. Again, this is all preliminary discussion, but the, the Board of Finance did discuss reducing the Board of Education's operating budget by a million dollars. They would recommend that half of that would come from the insurance savings that we had discussed and about the, having that little bit of insurance reserve to help us to combat any significant fluctuation in price that we know occurs from time to time with insurance. And then the other remaining five hundred thousand dollars, there was some discussion about it being from turnover savings or other places. As you know, as the operating budget, it's the Board of Education's decision as far as the allocation of the money. So the Board of Finance was just discussing these and, and making some suggestions or recommending possible areas to look. Certainly, the decision is not made. There's a meeting tomorrow night. We'll certainly, we'll be attending that, and we'll be answering some further questions that have come, and looking forward to that discussion. There's also a public hearing tomorrow night prior to the meeting for anyone who would like to share information with the Board of Finance. And then on Thursday night is the final meeting and discussion with the Board of Finance and their vote to pass the budget along to the town council. And our first meeting with the town council is on Wednesday night, where we'll anticipate, we'll have a list of questions, you know, prior to that. And we'll be, we'll go into those discussions similarly to the way we've done so with the Board of Finance. The conversations have been healthy, and it's important to take a good look at, at everything. But just to reiterate again, I know I've already said it twice, but I feel very confident that what we've brought, put forward is a very responsible budget that really does identify and address the needs of our school system to continue moving it, it forward on behalf of all of our kids, and to sustain a level of excellence that I think the community has rightfully come to expect from our schools and from our students. So just wanted to share that with the board and see if you have any feedback for us.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Dr. Lettsay?
So I guess my question would be, we're, we're in our current budget, I think we're assuming a hundred thousand in turnovers already.
Yes.
So if we decided to take five hundred, as a board decided that we would put five hundred thousand into the reserves, has there been any update on the insurance situation that would indicate that we're still going to have that surplus? Has it gone up or down since we presented?
Penny, first, first of all, the retirement turnover savings, I could not in good conscience say we should do that because we only, at this point, still have one teacher retirement that's come in. We, so to assume a five hundred thousand dollar saving.
No, no, I misspoke. I didn't, I just, we, we just had a hundred thousand in that, right?
We did.
So, yeah. I want an update on that and an update on the insurance.
Okay. I'm sorry. So as far as the retirements go, that's okay. The, I, I think that, well, first, currently, we have one sort of, one teacher retirement that we're aware of. The, we have an administrator retirement, but as you know, there are no savings and turnover with administrators because they're not on staff. So we have one teacher retirement. And we did build in an assumption of one hundred thousand dollars for the turnover savings. So right now, if all things ended the way they are, we would have overestimated the number of retirements that we would have. You know, because again, turnover is different than retirement as well. We, you'll see there are some resignations on our agenda, on the board's agenda this evening. Those resignations may or may not result in savings depending upon, you know, where that person who's leaving is on the salary scale and where their replacement comes in. Retirement, we've, we've sort of developed a figure to use just based on what we've seen over the last few years of, it's again, about thirty-four thousand dollars per person, per teacher who retires. But I've mentioned before, that's strictly in the salary line, and it doesn't account for other onboarding costs that we do accrue over the couple of years the person comes on board. That, those costs are things like the, the grid progression and tuition reimbursement and professional development costs and other things. So while it's neat and clean to look in the salaries and see that, that shift, what's less apparent are some of the other costs that we pick up when, when new staff members join us. So we're always, we try to be as careful as we can with that. The insurance number, Joy?
So when compared to what we have in the budget currently for the ending balance, we have one month of actuals that have been on the books since that forecast, which is through January, and they are tracking as expected right now. But we continue to monitor those every single month. And as the town council votes on this, we'll have more information. And should there be additional savings there, we will definitely bring those forward like we did last year.
You may be aware that the town and the Board of Education were cooperatively looking at stop-loss insurance. And in conversation today, a very preliminary conversation, the consultant for the town named Larry identified that he thinks there may be some savings possible by combining that, that stop-loss insurance with the town and the Board of Ed. Not in the, not in the ballpark of the five hundred thousand, other things we're talking about, but there could be some savings there. He's going to there. He's going to continue analyzing that. When I talked with him, actually, when Joe talked with him today, he didn't have the actual analysis to share, but he just shared optimism that there could be something there as well that could be helpful.
So, then what I'm sort of looking at is, it'd be hard to assume a lot more in turnover savings at this point, and we, as a board, would then have to start looking at approximately 400, 500,000 in additional cuts that we would make to the operating budget. So, can you talk about the types of buts, reductions that we would have to consider in terms of, you know, where we can go, you know, supplies, athletics, co-curriculars, you know, what would we, you know, I think that the, my, from my past experience on the board, cuts of that nature indicate that we would start to be going into our real program and affecting the educational experience of the students next year. So, that was why I wanted to know what you were thinking.
Yeah. And, you know, if we're saying it's $500,000, we would have to go into the, into the educational program. We've already worked very hard to manage the, certainly, when we look at our heating fuel costs, our electricity, those, those large-budget drivers, and when we look at this, the budget year to year, you actually see there, there's a decrease, and that's thanks to Joanne and Bob and John and the team and how they've negotiated these contracts to bring those things down. We would have to look at our, our new positions, and we would have to look at existing positions and truly make some value decisions about urgency and importance. Regardless of which way the decision fell, it would reduce, it would result in a reduction to the, to the quality of the experience for the students that are being served by those people. So, if we were to make a decision that the, the math specialist was more important than an existing position, then we would have to make some changes that way. The, but that, that's a significant amount of money. As you can see in the budget documentation, it's, every dollar's accounted for. So, we really would have to take a hard look. The, you know, we talk in terms of programs, and, and I've said to the boards in the past that we do all that we can to keep reductions in the budget away from the student experience. You know, we think that the quality of that experience is the single most important thing we do. But then this, a reduction like this would probably, would drive us to the next level, which would be protecting the instructional core, right? So, we look at our classrooms, we look at, in the disciplines and the core and look to protect that. So, we'd have to look at other programs that surround the core that often add value to the experience for kids, often engage them in meaningful ways, cognitively, emotionally, other ways. But we'd have to make some really hard decisions about that.
Hazel.
Just to add on, I asked, I wondered if you could add on to just what you were saying or help people be defining the term electives or something that some people have suggested. Can you explain what those are and what that, in the same way, what that means to a student?
Sure, sure.
Or students.
Yep. The, excuse me, certainly at the, at the high school, you know, the elective program, we have the, the core academics, which English, Math, Science, Social Studies, Word Language. Then, of course, there are other requirements around physical education and others. But then we have a very, well, an expansive elective program that is, has been developed through the years as a comprehensive high school to be sure that we're able to engage all of our students in, in the work that they're doing. The electives can be, for the arts, electives in technology, in our, our television studio, for instance, our music technology course, it can be, you know, a wide variety of, we have electives in science, we have electives in, in other core areas even that are more, often more theme-centered or more specific to, to whatever that activity is. The value of the, of electives, to me, certainly as a, a longtime high school principal, are, you know, often the students, they come in for the classes and the discipline, the work that they're doing, and there's a lot, it's valuable and important. The electives often engage their minds and their hearts, you know, it's the things often that they love to do, whether it's the culinary program, whether it's our, our nursery school here at the high school, whatever it might be, there's so many things. But they really enable, they provide our students with an opportunity to engage as something that they, they love as well. The, we have a, an extensive catalog of electives. However, we don't run all of our electives every year. You know, the, what electives we run are based upon the student interest in course selection. So, we're able to really run the electives that are of a highest interest for our students based on, based on their enrollment as they come in as well. So, it's, you know, it would certainly, well, it would certainly have a negative impact on the student experience to begin decreasing our electives, and certainly to do it for, you know, budgetary reasons would be very tough.
Thank you. Hey, Ma, Sangita.
Yeah. The cut that's been proposed for the operating budget is very concerning to me. I, I think that, you know, we have done, or you guys have done as administration in terms of developing this budget, in the past, we didn't have information as pinpointed as we do today because of munis and figuring out and tracking all the things and stuff. I think, you know, our budget's very concise. I think historically, people thought that, you know, because we had money left over at the end of the year, that we had extra money in our budget. Part of that was just due because it's hard to predict retirements and other things that just you couldn't figure out earlier. But I think now with our better tracking systems, we can even do better than we have in the past, and I think that, you know, we have a very lean budget.
I just want to, just to address that one piece. We generally, year to year, year-over-year, have managed the budget to better than 99% of the allocation.
And from what I understand, I'm not from the corporate world, but, you know, having 1% difference is just amazing. Yes. But, you know, with that being said, I think people kind of think, oh, well, we always have extra money left over. And the understanding is that we've gone in and looked at all, like you said, the heating and other areas where we can cut money and been really precise and been responsible to come up with something that's, that's real and that is, you know, best for the taxpayers to give us the quality that we want in our educational system. So, and we can't also think that there's going to be that many retirements every year and year. There's, a lot of times, the teachers, administrators all kind of came in together, and then they tend to retire because of that age level. That doesn't go on year after year. We've had several years where we've had many people retire. There's not that many people left to retire, I don't think. So, you know, just to kind of think like, oh, they'll always have that, that's not necessarily true. And it's very hard to predict, and I think it's really difficult, too, that we have to figure out this budget now, whereas we don't know some of the components. I mean, even though enrollment's not projecting that we may need more elementary school teachers, you never know. We could have a big flux in the summer, and then we need another teacher for elementary. That's going to put more stress on the budget, you know, particularly with these cuts. And I think maybe you could speak to the fact that you can't just hire teachers for certain programs and expect, well, we can go back and get more money, because that, it doesn't work that way. Because many people think like, well, you can always go back to the town if you're short. We do need to live in this budget. I mean, that's part of our financial responsibility. So, whatever it is, we have to just manage and cut whatever is necessary to be in that. We can't go back. Is everybody correct in phrasing that?
I think correct in phrasing that it is our responsibility to manage with our, with the allocation of our budget. Right. That, and certainly, I feel strongly that that is our obligation as a management team, and I think as a Board of Education managing that budget, that if something dire did occur, certainly, you know, we would have that conversation with the town. But beyond that, it's, it's our responsibility to manage the allocation and work within that.
Hazel.
I just, I think the point that you're making, Sangita, is an important one. In the first sentence that you said, we gave the money back, that whenever there was any money, we've always given it back. We've never tried to expand and to go beyond that, which I think shows a real credit to the Board of Education and to the, all of the administrative people who have helped to make sure that as thriftily as possible, every program is being run. I wanted to ask a question also myself on what's happening on the state level that's asking for more money from us? And what's the status of that? And how much is it?
And that's a great question, Hazel, because I do believe that some of the consternation around the budget this year, it does flow from the uncertainty in Hartford right now. The, you know, the governor has proposed a budget that does eliminate the educational cost-sharing grant for, actually, reduces it to $300,000 next year, about $350,000, where it was a little bit over a million in the past. Also, reduces significantly the special education reimbursement money that we'd be eligible for. Probably the biggest thing that people are most worried about is it asks districts to begin paying a portion of the teacher's retirement obligation. And so, that's, it's about a third of the state's obligation that it asks municipalities to begin paying. So, for us here in New Canaan, that would be about $4.2 million. These, this is the governor's initial proposal. Certainly, there's lots of conversation and, you know, and many hypotheses about how far this proposal will get and the way that it is. But that uncertainty is tough, you know, and certainly for this to come up in the middle of the budget discussions and for it to be in flux while towns are trying to learn about and decide their funding for next year, I think really is unfair and puts the, all of the town bodies at a significant disadvantage as they're trying to do the best for their, for their communities.
Thank you. Sangita.
Just one other thing. I have many parents, you know, who've spoken to me, and I think to all of us, about the fact that they moved this town because of the school system. The education is wonderful. I know the last rating I looked at on the internet, you know, for the greatest schools, they gave us a 10 out of 10. And that wasn't just for the high schools, for the middle school and every, each and every elementary school. Most districts don't get that kind of rating.
Was that the same site, or was it a different one that said we were the number-one district in Connecticut?
That was a different site.
A different site. Okay. Just checking.
So, you know, the school system here is what brings people here to this town. The parents, you know, want to keep that quality of education that we've been establishing and want to keep having it strike forward. There, I know it's difficult for the town leaders to figure out, you know, there's only so much money, and it's getting tighter from, you know, our state. But again, it's about allocations and where you want to put your investment. I think we've, as you've mentioned in your presentations, we've got a, a great return on our investment in the school system. And I don't think we, parents want to see it deteriorate, you know, so if they have to choose between something in the town for a park or for, you know, another building or something else versus cutting into the educational system, the programming, you know, of the teachers and what they offer, I think the choice would be very quick and easy. I don't think they have to deliberate about that, you know? That's, that's whatever I hear from everyone. And so, I hope people keep that in mind, that yes, choices are tough, you know, and everyone wants everything, but you have to choose and pick. And, you know, as you mentioned, you know, sometimes there may be the electives, we could might not understand the importance of those, but that's what keeps kids going. I mean, it's hard to do the core classes. If you don't have that other place where you can have your creativity, you don't tend to do as well in your core classes, or it doesn't stimulate to do something brilliant using one of the core subjects in a, in a different way, you know? We've seen so much growth in, in creative industry with digital things, graphics and such, which use math and, you know, art design, you know? And those things are spurred on by an interest or like they worked someplace and got that opportunity to experience that, to even think about going in that direction. So, it, it's just concerning, and I hope people are listening and that parents and others and members of the community who think that that's important, you know, that we maintain the integrity of our education, come out and speak out. And I know you said there's a public hearing tomorrow, but the timing on that for when the public?
It's seven o'clock at Town Hall.
Okay. And are we first on the agenda or?
The public hearing first, and then the Board of Finance will go into its discussion.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I would just like to, you know, bring up a couple things. I think, you know, I was at a meeting last week where a legislator for this community mentioned that the chance of that teacher pension fund being brought back to this town is a less than 5% chance of happening. So, you know, I, I'm all for, you know, forward-looking and planful budgeting, but sort of the doomsday scenario that we're all being presented with, you know, trust me, it's not, we're, we're going to get hits in the town, but I'm not sure that this is what we're going to get. And, and, you know, I've heard over and over again, the Board of Finance saying that they have an overfunded general fund beyond what the rating agencies have requested them to have. And so, in my mind's eye, that's what you have an overfunded general fund for. When you have this kind of uncertainty in, in a budget year, this is when you can take that overfunding, and if, if by chance we get hit, we have the money there, and then next budget cycle, we need to, you know, we need to take a look at it. But, you know, it, I think people need to understand that, you know, we, we came in with a 2.76% year-over-year budget increase, and the cuts that they're proposing bring the year-over-year increase down to 1.6%. I know a number of us have been in the teacher negotiations and, and have been in the, you know, meetings where we discuss the other salary negotiations, and I can tell you, we're nowhere near 1.6%, and that's 65% of our budget. That doesn't, that doesn't pay for, for 65% of our, our budget is, is over 1.6%. So... You're, you're cutting into the meat of the educational programming at this district, and I think people need to understand that. And finally, you know, I think to go into the, the specials conversation, not only are you engaging the hearts and minds of, of students, but oftentimes, you're giving them exposure into what might be their life's work. I mean, you know, there are artists, there are people in the tech. I mean, my goodness, I, I look over at Spencer and I see all the, he, he is the resident town expert in everything with tech and video, and, you know, I'm, I'm guessing there'll be something in that in your future, but who knows? But I think, you know, and, and not every child is going to be engaged in the core curricular subjects. And, and the reason we, we keep them, to Sangita's point, is, is that they have something in their educational day to look forward to. You know, I, I have a daughter whose, whose music instructor said to her, this is, this is your happy place. And, you know, when she didn't want to take another course, she said, Lauren, this is your happy place. You need to take it. And, and she's right, it is her happy place. And I think there's lots of kids that have happy places in different parts of the school day that aren't part of Math, Science, Social Studies, Word Language. So, I think people need to, to understand that. It's a, it's a stressful, we live in a, in a stressful time, and, you know, if we can, we can give these kids something that, that engages them outside of, you know, the, the core curricular subjects, I think it's important. So, that's enough said.
Yeah. Just again, to follow, you know, with, about where we can do these cuts, you know? So, again, when I was looking at, you know, the nice pie chart that we have, so, you know, you just talk about 68% salary, but if you include the benefits, too, and again, these are things that we are contracted to do, we can't move the dial on, it's already been negotiating, this is what we have. It comes to 86.23%, because I was just looking at these numbers, someone had asked me about it. And then there's another 17.03% that is for contracted services, you know, things that the kids need, behavioral assistance or, you know, OT, audio, whatever it is that they need. So, those are things that we're going to have. There's not much you can say that, I'm not going to give you this service that, that a child requires, you know, or if it's property services, like for software licensure and stuff, things that we need to use for this, to, for, to do the curriculum. So, that leaves very little space, you know, for, to, to make a cut. And so, of course, the only place left then is you're going to looking at, at these programs because we can't do anything else. I mean, that's a big percentage of your budget. So, and that, as, as Dr. Lettsi said, is a big number. And I'm going to say it again because I think it's important. No, we can't count on more retirements or other things. There's just, you know, heating efficiencies, we've done all that. So, that's all that's left to cut.
Yeah, I think... Thank you, Sangita. The point about the sort of discretionary money, right? I would invite anyone, everyone, to, to, again, take a good, close look at the budget documentation that, you know, Joanne and her team have done such a wonderful job putting together. And it really does walk you through sort of why the budget changed, and why did it change from the, this current budget to next year's budget? If you look right on those, the detailed pages right up front in the beginning, it can really sort of help you understand and, and it highlights some of those areas of efficiency we've been able to take. You know, again, with the fuel, others, you know, the transportation contract, you know, we've negotiated that this year, and you'll see that, you know, it's a well-managed increase there. So, the, the budget documentation, I believe, is, is excellent, and I think it really does point to much of what we're discussing, which is that, you know, to do, to, to go in there looking for more reductions and savings means to hit areas that would not be considered discretionary.
Sorry, Hazel.
Just what you're talking about, is it easy for people to be able to find the budget online? Where would they go to?
Yep. We've made it extraordinarily easy, I believe. They go to the district homepage. There's a budget quick link on the left-hand side of the page, and you could also get to it if you click on Board of Education, and there's another budget link there as well.
So, start with the New Canaan Public Schools?
It would be ncps-k12.org. Yep. Yep. And the entire document is there. The, if you're patient or have a fast internet connection, you can click and download the whole thing all at once and have the whole document. If you're just interested, you want to go right to the heart of it, I would encourage you to download the first couple of sections, the detailed overview. And I also encourage people to read the narratives that go with it because they really do sort of explain the numbers and bring to life what it all means. We can look at spreadsheets and charts and sort of think we understand it, but until you really understand the rationale behind those shifts, I think it's really just numbers. It's the, what, it's the narrative that brings it to life a bit and how it impacts kids, which is, you know, what we're all about.
Thank you. Penny?
I just want to say, when I look at this budget and what were the differences from last year is, is, you know, if you look at the new positions at the high school, that's not adding program, that's addressing just the movement of the large eighth grade to the ninth grade. So you need, they take six classes, you need 1.2 additional people to support that class, that large class. If you look at the structure at South, at Saks, it's, the reason that the district is able actually to benefit financially by having a large middle school is that we keep up this team program, the team process. And so that means that sometimes you have teams that are a little bit smaller and sometimes you have teams that are a little bit bigger, but you have to keep that team structure in place so you can handle the variety of class sizes that go through. The math specialists that we're adding at Saks is to identify specified needs that we have in that area, in that school, to support that student population. I mean, I'm just looking, thinking we're going to have to look at the new positions and I'm not really finding, there's, we're not adding a program this year. It's not like we can say, you know, well, we're just going to put off adding that new program for another year. This is really servicing the core subjects of the students that we have in school now. And having to have to cut $400,000 or $500,000 out of that, I can assure the parents that they will, they will feel that because I'm looking through the budget. I don't know, the janitor that we're, that we had said that we were adding at Saks, that was, we had presented that when we did the Saks addition. You know, we'll, we'll be well over the, if we don't add a janitor, we'd have to, I don't even know, we'd be well over the square footage that each person is supposed to handle. So, you know, you need to maintain your, the cleanliness of your schools. So I, there is not a lot of flexibility. There wasn't, you know, I think we all knew going into this year, I, I think we would be looking at cutting budgets and positions that we didn't want to.
Well, and that's why we, well, I, I'm just, just wanted to reiterate, that's how we were able to bring the 2.76 forward, right? Was really a very careful look and we made some hard decisions upfront to not add program, to look at iterative ways that we can continue meeting the needs. And, you know, we, we identified the needs that are being addressed in the budget really throughout the fall and even last year, you know, as we talked with, whether Lizette's or, you know, with Zoe in the math department, with others. So we, we had a conscious decision to do that this year, knowing that it was, we wanted to come in as low as we could.
Hazel?
I just wanted to make sure that people understood too, that the concept of reducing the student-to-teacher ratio is something that we've been very good about making sure that we keep for years. It makes such a tremendous difference to students, especially if they're going through any personal problems and if they're having a learning problem, to be able to have those classes so that a teacher can instantly go over and help that student, look at the homework and look at what's happening. And I think that's something that over and over people say, how much they appreciate the, the way that the teachers work with their children, make sure that there is nothing that's left out. And when you have class size expanding, which is what, again, I'm like Penny, I'm saying, what are we going to do? That's the one that'll be one of the ones we'll look at. We have never had to look at classes that were big because we've looked at what was the best class size for students to really be able to learn. And that's why our class sizes are what they are. They're not unreasonably small, they're really in a good fit for this class and for the students and also for the teachers to make sure that each child's needs are met.
Anyone else? Maria?
I know no one wants a large class size in the elementary, but I'm curious what the class size is at the high school for core or AP courses or electives? Like what's the general class size?
At the high school, it's a bit different than the others, as you know, because of the nature of the programs and courses. But generally, it's from 16, it's gone up to 20, it's gone up to 28 in certain math courses and things, if need be. But the, you know, the nature of the program depends. So for instance, in the culinary program, we have 16 stations for students, you know, for them to be doing the work. So we're, we're limited there. But if, if we have a course that, we try to keep it between 16 and 25 or 26 where we can. But we also don't use that as a reason for a student not to go and get into a class. Let's say that a student wants, needs, wants to enroll into a math class and we don't have another section to balance it out, we'll let those sizes go up if we must. So it's a little different than, say, the middle school, the high school, just due to the nature of the, the schedule and the way that that works. But we do generally look to use about 16 as a minimum. But, but there are always exceptions to that too. We have our Mandarin program, for instance, that when we brought in years ago, we knew that Mandarin tends to be low enrollment. But for those students, once they get onto that, you know, in the cycle, it's very important for them to be able to continue. So we've sometimes looked to do creative things like grouping together different levels of, of the class. So you might have a Mandarin three and a Mandarin three honors together, or even a three or three honors and a four together in the same room. Other times, we, you know, try, we, we will sometimes run it if it's smaller than 16, you know, depending upon the class itself.
I had another question too. I keep hearing mixed reports about AP courses and that they, you know, some colleges are not taking the credit in the way you think they will. My kids have always done them, a lot of them. And I know it does put an extra amount of pressure and stress. Are we still moving as, as much into adding on to the AP courses or, you know, at any point, do they get too small to even continue?
What we've looked to do through, through the last few years is to broaden the catalog of AP opportunities for kids. So it was, certainly those that are already in AP may take more, but we also were looking to bring students into the AP program who otherwise maybe didn't have a course that was interesting to them. So bringing things like environmental science or psychology or, well, government politics has always been very large, but economics and others, to try to broaden the appeal for more students to participate. We are, we have added some in the last few years, but I think in our next, when we look forward to next year, we're not adding any AP courses when we look at the high school and the offerings. We're really looking in, in some different areas to do that. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. Did you? Okay. Are you sure? Okay. Sangita?
That's what I just to bring up, you know, people always ask, well, why does the, the school budget always increase every year to year? And, you know, we are, as we've said, you know, a staff or an employee-oriented business, you know, it's the, everyone helping to educate the children. And with that, you have unions and negotiations and cost of living expenses. And so each year, we do contracts and there is a cost of living expense, so the, the budget's going to increase and that's a big part of our budget. So you know you're going to, it can't be a zero budget as like some of the other town and departments might be able to be because it's, it's a different animal, pretty say. And we do really good with the negotiations. I don't know if people realize that, you know, we're very competitive with other people in our district and, and we're not afraid to, like this year, one of the groups we had to go arbitration with, you know, so it's, it's not that we don't, you know, look to get the best deal for the town and the taxpayers in, in keeping those costs as low as possible. But there are costs and, and it's never 1.6% as, as Deanna mentioned, you know, of, of an increase. And so you are going to see increase in the budget. Sometimes people misinterpret when they say that, well, we didn't cut the budget, we just didn't increase it by the amount that they wanted. And that makes no sense because the budget is including all those costs that we have negotiated and worked out and such. So it, it's not that you can say that we just increased it by that much, it really is a true cut and that you have to take away some money from someplace else because we have to pay certain fixed costs.
Okay. All right. I think we've fully supported the, the Board of Ed's budget, unless someone has something new to add. Oh, Hazel.
If anyone has any questions, I think they should contact us because we certainly know and certainly at the main office, there are people there that can answer even better than I can, I know for sure. But to feel comfortable to let us know if there are questions they have or if concerns or something that they have a suggestion, so we can help them to understand how things fit together in this unique puzzle.
Okay. Moving on to Statement of Accounts with Dr. Keating.
All right. Well, the good news is that we are tracking right to our forecast for this current year. Last month, you did approve a number of transfers through the end of December. This report reflects the financial activity through the end of January. There are no transfers. As I said, we are tracking very close to the forecast. Of our total budget appropriation, we're almost halfway through expending it at 49.5. We're encumbered at 45.3%. So we have about 5.2% remaining and those are variable costs that will be incurred or projected to be incurred through the end of June. So that's it.
Does anyone have any questions on this month's Statement of Accounts? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Keating. It's always easier when there's no transfers. We'll move into the action items section of our agenda. And the first item on our agenda is the Board of Education Policies Community Relations, the second read. And I guess we have a motion to rescind all the policies contained in the current Board of Education Policy Manual, Section 1000, Community Relations, as to, as to adopt in its place the revised Series 1000, Community Relations, as first read and seconded by Ms. West and Mr. Hayes on February 6th, 2017, as amended. Do we have, we have a motion and a second? Do we have any further discussion on the Community Relations policies? Tom?
I was just going to mention two things. I did mean to get out a, a brief memo. There was a request by several board members as to making a note of any policies that were simply moved out of this series. So not necessarily changed or dropped, but moved and recodified in a more appropriate series. So I wanted to let you know that there were two in this series that were reviewed, Series 1000. The first of which was 1220 and that was simply moved to Philosophy and that will be reviewed again in that series. And then the second one was number 1300 and that deals with donations to school, schools, and that was appropriately recodified as 3280. So we'll see that when we review the Business Series 3000. So it already has a code, meaning that Cave has already done the work, we just have not reviewed it as a board.
Are there any other questions or comments before we vote? Penny?
My question is, do we as a board just have to approve those two temporary changes till we get to them and review it? That the move?
No. Or the? No, because we, we rescinded all the, all the existing policies, we're replacing with these existing ones, so.
But two of the policies.
They have not been.
We want, we don't, we're not, we're moving to different sections.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And rename, so we actually, if we vote to rescind all of them, we, in effect, we haven't moved these two already, then we'd be rescinding them. I don't know if you need a board vote to move them.
See, if, if they want to keep those two policies, then, and they, they don't exist anywhere else right now.
Okay. Do we know what those two policies are?
Yes.
So why, why don't we amend it to include those two policies?
Right.
In the motion?
Okay. Right. That's what I was thinking. Okay. So, all right. So could I have a motion to amend the origi, hold on, now I got to get the language back because I put it away. Hold on just a second. Did I put it? Here it is. It's underneath here. All right. So could I get a motion to amend the original, original motion to include, to rescind all the policies except 1220?
Correct.
And 1330?
No, 13.
1300.
13.
Let me double check that phrase, it's important. 1220 is correct and.
That's what he said.
Yes, 1300.
1300, not 1330. Okay, 1300. So could I get a motion to amend the motion to?
Can I, hold on, can I add something to that?
Okay.
Which is that, that in 1300 should be re, moved to the, which section? And codify the 3280?
3280, yes. Series 3000 business.
I would suggest we leave it in this series.
You can leave it in this series.
Until we do the 3000 series.
Because we don't know what we want to do with it yet.
And then we'll remove it when we do the 3000 series from the 1000.
Okay.
That's what I would.
We'll essentially be voting to recodify it when we do 3000. Doesn't need to be rescinded.
Okay.
Yeah, because regardless of the series it's in, it's still.
It's still, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So again, could I get a motion to amend the original motion to rescind all the policies except for 1220 and 1300?
So moved?
Okay. Second, Hazel? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So then, if I could get a vote on, right, because I would just, now we've had them, any further discussion on any of these motions? Okay. Could I get a vote on the motion to rescind all the policies excluding 1220 and 1300 contained in the current Board of Education Policy Manual, Section 1000, Community Relations, and to adopt in its place the revised Series 1000, Community Relations, as first read and seconded by Ms. West and Ms. Hayes? All those in favor? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks to the committee for all of their incredible, long and hard work on this. That was very much appreciated. These were good amendments.
Yeah.
This is an extraordinary attempt. I've worked on this once before and it was very, very difficult, as I remember. So thank you.
Okay. The next item on our action item is the Saks PTC donation. And I'd like a motion to approve a PTC donation to Saks Middle School in the amount of $8,520 for four bottle-filling water stations, including installation. Do I have a motion? Penny? Second, Sangita? Any discussion? I just had one question. So when we put these bottle-filling stations in at Saks, do they have to bore into the walls? And do we have, I, given sort of our other issues in, in the auditorium and other places, are we, do we have any concern that we could have? Is there anyone that can speak to that?
Yes. So the, so both Katie and Jennifer offered to be here tonight. And, you know, I told them that I'd be glad to represent them for, represent them to you. They have gotten three quotes, both for the water filling station itself and for the installation. And so this request is, you know, comes from those three quotes as they've looked at it. As you know, we've, we've done this at the high school with some great success. Wasn't always easy, it could be challenging a little bit on the install, but the students are using them and it really is the way that schools in the area and the state, whatever, are, are going. And I know, Penny, there was some question about the Saks Building Committee today, whether or not water, water fountains in the new wing would be filling stations as well.
Okay. And I would tell you that four of the five will be filling stations.
Fantastic. So the, I know that Katie and Jennifer also have been meeting with our facilities folks and talking with them about doing the installation. We are confident that they've covered everything and crossed all their Ts and batted all their Is and that we'll be able to do this without any problems.
Okay. So no environmental issues with putting in the direct replacements? Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Direct replacements.
Okay, perfect.
Very easy.
Okay.
How does schools go about a challenge?
Oh, beautiful. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
No, I just want to say, I mean, I'm so excited to see our middle school going green, too, because it has been a success, and I know my son who's going to the high school is like, "When can we get him at Saks?" So it's great that we're finally getting him at Saks, too. So thank you again to the PTC and all the parents.
Yeah.
And Bob and John.
And Bob and John.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of receiving the donation? It's unanimous. Thank you. And thank you to the PTCs. It's amazing, all the things they do for the schools.
Really, so thoughtful.
Next item on your agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Hazel, second. Penny, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. And do I have anyone who'd like to make any comments? Seeing none, we will move to announcements and future business. Dr. Letzzi?
Yes. So on the, on the consent agenda, there was the retirement of Dr. Laduke, who is in her sixth year as assistant principal here at the high school. I've known Dr. Laduke since 2002, from when we were students together in the doctoral program at Teachers College. She is an outstanding educator. I'm going to tell you all about her in June, which always used to be my favorite meeting, but now that Ronnie's on the agenda, it might not be my favorite meeting anymore. I've been very lucky to work with Ronnie for a number of years, and I look forward to telling you all about her in June, but just wanted to, to point that out, because she has done so much and been so important for us here in New Canaan over these past six years. As you, I'm sure you recall, when I was, when I became superintendent, Ronnie willingly stepped in and helped out for the year as our interim principal even here at the high school. She's really in it for all the right reasons, and we're going to miss her. Our next Board of Education meeting is March 27. That's all that I really have, because we are so consumed by budget and the conversations therein. I'm going to save my voice for tomorrow.
Okay. All right. And I'd like to echo Dr. Letzzi's, you know, sadness over the resignation or retirement, retirement of Dr. Laduke. She seems too young to be retiring.
It's all of that positive energy.
Okay. So if I could get an motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 1-225, the subject to be discussed is Attorney Client Privilege Memorandum Concerning Trust Will of Deceased Resident Related to New Canaan Public Schools and Possible Action. Any action would take place in open session. Can I have a motion? Penny, second. Tom, all those in favor? Okay. Meeting adjourned to executive session.